We are live captioning our meetings. Please look in the chat window of our WebEx meeting where you'll find a link. Please click on that link to open a webpage with the live captioning. This time I'd like to call to order the Agenda Review Meeting of the Maricopa County Community College District Governing Board of December 11th. It's actually not December 11th, of February 11th, 2025. And today we'll review the agenda for the February 25th, 2025 Board Meeting. For the record, I will call or roll call the Board members now. There are several of our Board that are on a flight back from the ACCT meeting, so they will not be present. We'll just note that. And those that are coming back from that meeting are Tamaya Jackson Long, Ms. Davis, excuse me, Dr. Norene and Ms. Sullivan. So let me ask, Ms. Butler, are you with us?
I'm here.
Ms. Davis?
Yes, I'm here.
Perfect. Ms. Smith?
Present.
Dr. Thor?
Present.
And myself, so we do have a quorum of the Board. So with that, we will walk our way through the agenda. Obviously, we have our normal introductory items, starting with the call to order, running our way through the Chancellor's report. And then we go on to the consideration of the consent agenda. And we have several items on the consent agenda. I will walk through them quickly. If you have questions, certainly, please stop and ask those. Item number two is approval of the acceptance of a continuation grant from the Corporation for Public Broadcasting to Rio Salado College for year 56 of the Community Service Grant KJZCC from 10/124 to 9/3026 in the amount of $732,375. Number three is approval of acceptance of a continuation grant from the Corporation for Public Broadcasting to Rio Salado College for year 31 of the Community Service Grant KBOC from 10/124 to 9/3026 in the amount of $261,620. Item number four is approval of the Intergovernmental Agreement between the City of Phoenix and Maricopa County Community Colleges District on behalf of Phoenix College to offer business courses to the City of Phoenix employees. Item number five is approval of project initiation for the semiconductor project at Gateway Community College, the central city campus, in the amount of $22,296,354. Item number six is approval of the issuance of a purchase order to G-Con Inc. in the amount of $735,034 for the Bridget Hall remodel project at Chandler Gilbert Community College on the Williams Campus. Item number seven is approval of expenditure budgeted funds not to exceed $642,000 over the term of three years for the purchase of the district-wide AMS Safe Fraudulent Application Financial Aid Fraud Detection and Mitigation Enterprise Agreement. Item number eight is the approval of tuition and fees for fiscal year 2025-26. Item number nine is approval of curriculum item courses, Modification 37, New 33 and Deletions 215, Occupational Programs, Modifications 58, New 12 and Deletion 7, Academic Programs, Modification 1 and Deletions 5. Item number 10 is the approval of Curriculum Item Academic Degrees and Policies 10. Are there any comments or questions? Not? Does any member of the Board or Chancellor wish to pull an agenda item to the regular agenda for our meeting? Hearing none, we have no non-consent agenda items at the moment. So we will have first read and information under item F. Number one, Employment and Separations Report from December 7, 2024 through January 17, 2025. Any questions or comments? Then item number two is the first read of Maricopa Community Colleges Governing Board Policy 4.5, dealing with Board Meetings. Any comments or questions? Being none, we'll go on to Monitoring Reports, which is item number G in the agenda. Number one under there, there is a placeholder for the Budget Analyst Report Fund I, which will be forthcoming. And then we move on to item H, which is the Community Linkage, which will have governing reports and current events and summaries, including our fellow Board members who are on their way back from Washington DC. Our next regular meeting date, of course, is Tuesday, February 25th. The Board meeting itself will be at 6:30 in the Conference Center. Prior to that, at 2 PM in the Rio Salado Tower, we will have a Governing Board Retreat. On March 4th, there'll be another Agenda Review Meeting at 4:30 via WebEx. And then on the 25th, we'll have our regular 2025 Work Session on the Budget at 5:30, followed by a regular Board Meeting at 6:30 in the Rio Salado Conference Center. This is now concluding our Agenda Review Meeting. I'll again ask the Board, are there any questions or comments? If not, we're going to move on to our Study Session. Study Session tonight is on the Higher Learning Commission Accreditation Training Program. I'd like to welcome our presenters, Ms. Stephanie Hopple, who is the District Director of Compliance Reporting and Accreditation Support, Mr. Dennis Mitchell, the Associate Vice President of Institutional Affectiveness for Mesa Community College, Mr. Brian Dill, the Political Science, Social Science at Mesa Community College. I don't know of which of the three of you are starting, but let me turn to whoever that might be of the team and ask you to proceed with your presentation. And Board members, you will see on the screen the slides that go with the presentation.
Thank you, President Bittersmith. This is Stephanie Hopple. I'll do the official, "Good afternoon, President Bittersmith, Members of the Board, Dr. Gonzalez, Members of CEC and guests." Again, my name is Stephanie Hopple, District Director for Compliance Reporting and Accreditation Support. I'm excited to share some accreditation updates with you and answer any questions you may have. The Mesa folks are here. There is a visit happening at the end of March, and so they are excited to have this conversation. Make sure we have this conversation with the Board. Elza, is it okay if I just say next slide? I could beep if you'd prefer.
No, 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 that's fine. Thank you.
Oh, good. Thanks, everyone. So a little bit of history, just in case there are any Board members that have not participated in this training before. All of our colleges are accredited by the Higher Learning Commission. And one of the pieces of information that people may not realize is that the US Department of Education does not have a department that reviews a credit and a credits degree granting institution. So that's where the Higher Learning Commission comes into play. It's an independent entity. It validates the quality of the institution's degree programs, takes a look at learning environments, and as well as student learning outcomes. And we'll talk about the other things that they do beyond academic offering, including governance, mission, finances and resources. Next slide, please. So this matters because without accreditation, we would not be able to have Title IV financial aid for students. And by "we," I'm talking about all 10 of our independently accredited colleges. A lot of times, college credits wouldn't transfer to another institution. If we are not accredited, they won't accept them. We also wouldn't have access to federal grants. Programmatic accreditation, we'd not be able to apply for that generally. And other participation of opportunities. For example, the student, the exchange student program, wouldn't be able to participate in that. You have to demonstrate that you are fully accredited. And it sends a message, accreditation sends a message that every institution that qualifies for accreditation has quality. They have checks and balances in place and operates with integrity. Thank you. So there's a brief overview of how accreditation works. On the left-hand side, there are two basic paths, if you will. Open Pathway, which includes three steps. So there's a virtual review, writing of a huge report. It is submitted to the Higher Learning Commission in year four, and that is a desk review. So there's not a visit. People don't come out generally as far as part of that. Also, in Open Pathway, there is a year seven to nine quality initiative. A lot of institutions have chosen assessment in the recent past. And then there is that 10-year in-person review, which President Bittersmith, I believe that you and other Board members participated in this last fall with Paradise Valley. And that's where the Higher Learning Commission sends out a group of peers to take a look at take a look at all of the information, the institutional report, the evidence that is submitted, and then has discussions with all of the folks, faculty, staff, students, Board members, et cetera, sometimes members of the community, to make sure that what was submitted in that report and in the evidence is really happening and to see how it is applied in a day-to-day basis. The next pathway is the in-person review. That's the standard pathway. And that is basically the process for the year 10 in-person review in years four and 10. So that full report and a site visit that happens. On the right-hand side of the screen, you'll see minimum standards. These are all live leaks. So when you get a copy of this or in the Board Packet, you can click on those with the criteria. There's a list of a variety of things, and we will talk about that later. There's also assumed practices, and these are issues that HLC expects every institution, every institution to comply with. And they don't necessarily check those at every single visit, but if there is an issue, they can certainly come back and take a look. Obligations of membership, basically that everyone agrees to follow the rules, if you will, to comply with federal standards, et cetera. And then the compliance and regulatory. And that's taking a look at the variety of processes in place, which includes grievances, having a process in place to handle those. And that's just a minor example, but there are quite a few things that are looked at as part of the compliance and regulatory report.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Who picks which path? Is that an institution choice or an HLC choice, whether you do the standard pathway or the open pathway?
Yes, and both. So generally, institutions, once they qualify for it, you have to have been accredited for a certain period of time and not had any major issues. They can choose open pathway or standard pathway. New institutions or institutions that may have some things that they need to focus on for multiple criteria, they are automatically put on the standard pathway to give them the opportunity to go through the basic processes. And then once that's done, then they can choose to go on open pathway. But any institution, even when that's on open pathway, they can determine and say, you know what, we'd rather go on standard pathway and have those, go through that practice.
Thank you.
President Bittersmith?
Yes, Dr. Thor?
Can you tell us how many of the colleges are on the open pathway and how many are on the standard pathway?
This is Stephanie. Nine are on open pathway. One is on standard pathway at this time. Follow-up questions related to either those or other follow-up questions is great as well.
Well, one has to ask, can you tell us which of our colleges is on the standard pathway option?
Yes, South Mountain is currently on standard pathway.
Understood. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. In that case, Elza, could you please go to the next slide? So I've listed both sets of criteria on the left-hand side are the current criteria. That's what Mesa is, will be reporting to. However, starting September 1st, 2025, there is a new set of criteria. You'll notice there are only four listed as opposed to five on the left. That doesn't mean there was a bunch of things that were changed or left out. That just means that it's been moved around and made a little bit more concise. In the Board Packet, each of those is a link. And what they're linked to is, hey, don't click on it, Elza, you'll be sorry. No, it takes you to a video. It takes you to a short video that the Higher Learning Commission has provided to provide just a little brief overview as far as each of those criteria. They don't take very long. If you have time, I highly recommend you take some time to review those videos, even just a few 10 minutes a day. Questions about the two?
Board members, any questions? Sounds like there are none. Thank you.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. Next slide then, please. So we talked a little bit about this. I just want to provide a bit of an overview as far as the two. The comprehensive visit, there, it is a 10-year visit. So that's actually the second bullet point. And that happens, like we talked, in person. And the Higher Learning Commission peer reviewers, those are people that are selected from a variety of institutions. They will go, they will read the report that is submitted by the team. They will look at the evidence that is submitted by the team and formulate questions that they will ask when they are on campus of people that are participating in the site visit. So that's the 10-year. The four-year is very similar, except it does not include the in-person necessarily. It can, HLC can decide they want to send people out for that four-year visit as well. But it is just, it's the assurance argument. And it's really just, it's a checkup. It is meant to serve as documentation for HLC to determine that whether or not an institution is continuing to meet all of the criteria. Other ways that the Higher Learning Commission may come and interact with any of our colleges include multi-location visit, whether there's a new visit, or a new location, rather, distance education review. They can take a look at the distance education programs and a substantive change visit, which most recently that was because of adding bachelor programs. Next slide, please. So here are some outcomes, the possible outcomes. On the far left, no follow-up required. That is ideal. That means all criteria are met. There may be routine monitoring as well. Examples of that in recent history include shared governance or faculty qualifications. Sometimes institutions will have a monitoring report related to assessment, for example. There may be special monitoring if there are intense financial issues or governmental investigations. We want to avoid those as much as possible. And then on the right-hand side, other things that can happen. These, the ones on the right require public disclosure, sanctions, including notice. So this would be if an institution is at risk of not meeting criteria. It does not mean that they are necessarily out of compliance, but really close. There may be probation, which means that the institution has demonstrated it does not meet HLC requirements. And then they have two years to demonstrate that they are back up to speed, processes are in place, they're being followed. And then show cause would be the next step. That is a bigger issue. Includes, of course, that public disclosure. We have to let the public know that that is happening. And institutions would have no more than a year to demonstrate compliance. And that's because they've likely had these other steps in extra time beforehand. And then in adverse reactions, rather, not reactions, is withdrawal of accreditation is the last step. I'm going to pause there for a moment for questions.
Are there questions from the Board? I don't hear any, Stephanie.
Okay, thank you so much. Right, so the next one I'm going to share is some roles. And this is informational because in May, in March, the Mesa team has requested to meet with the Board. It will be an online virtual meeting. However, it is important that the Board understands not only each Board member's role, but also the other roles throughout the district, including the Chancellor. So Board roles, number one. The criteria that are listed with each of those aligns with the new criteria. So when you are taking a look, if you're clicking through, you'll be able to see which one, which one's most aligned with you. The only one missing with Board, you'll notice, is Criterion 3. That doesn't mean that the Board doesn't work with Criterion 3, but that is more related to the academic leadership and curriculum and that sort of thing. And so that is the faculty are the ones that are mainly responsible for that. We all work together, we know that. I just wanted to share in case you're thinking, hey, how come there's no Criterion 3? So the first thing, oh, go back, please, Elza. I was just taking a drink. All right, thank you. The first thing, of course, that the Board needs to do is develop and adopt the mission, review that mission, make sure that it aligns with community needs, especially since our Board are elected. It's important to keep that, to keep our community in mind. Also, review and adopt the mission developed by the colleges. Next up is make informed ethical decisions and observe Board policies. So make sure, just like everyone, we are doing what we say we are going to do. That'll be important. And it is possible and does happen to where the site visitors for the Higher Learning Commission will ask, give me an example of when you had to make an ethical decision. So we'll have that, we can have that conversation. The third bullet, designate day-to-day management of the institution to the Chancellor and academic matters to the faculty. That was what I was speaking to before with Criterion 3. Make sure and regularly monitor institutional performance goals. How do you get that information? How do you make decisions and recommendations related to that? Next up is communicate with stakeholders as one board, a common voice. That is really important because if we had one Board member saying that we're going to do X and another Board member saying, no, we're going to do Y, that makes it really a challenge to have the conversations with the accreditor that says, this is what we are going to do. And so it's important that the Board is all on the same page related to that. Next up, share, engage in shared governance, support others throughout faculty, staff, et cetera, communicating with the Board, sharing decision-making. And then finally, exercising fiscal budgets oversight. So that one may be last, but it is by no means least. That is one of the Board's main responsibilities. It's the fiscal oversight, making sure that each institution, each college and the district as a whole has the resources that it needs in order to teach our students. I'm going to pause there too, because this is probably the most important slide I can share with you this evening.
Board members, several of us have had an opportunity to do portions of this, some more than others. Are there questions about our role? Hearing none?
Ah, that's beautiful.
I'll turn back to do.
Thank you so much. We're on a roll then. Next up, please, Elza. So here's the Chancellor's role. Again, this is informational only, so I won't go into nearly as much detail. But it is important, the Chancellor provides leadership for accreditation, then he understands the responsibilities, champions the institutional mission and vision, that those conversations happen in a collaborative way, oversee compliance efforts, that he supports the colleges and the college faculty and staff that are working towards accreditation, engage with college presidents and the accreditation liaisons and the Board, have those conversations together, similar to what we're doing today, promote that culture of continuous improvement. If multiple colleges have ideas as far as how they want to improve, have those conversations to make sure that we're on the same page, or that, again, that the resources are there. And of course, foster shared governance. That collaboration and decision-making really makes a difference, especially as we are reporting to the Higher Learning Commission and to make sure that everyone is, understands responsibilities and what needs to be done in order to make sure our students are successful and we are all achieving the mission. Next one, please, unless there's questions, then I'm happy to go back at any time.
Again, any questions from the Board?
Okay, thank you. Next up. So I know that President Bittersmith, you recently participated in the site visit at Paradise Valley last October. So here's some things, in case any of the Board members have not participated, is some things that you can expect. There will be a small meeting with the site visitors, five to seven people. Sorry, Dennis, I don't remember the exact number. But they will take some time and they will meet with the Board. In this case, of course, it will be virtual. There will be questions that they ask based on the report that was submitted to them. And the Mesa team is creating what we're calling one-sheeter. So for each criteria, you will have a single page for the Board. And of course, you'll have access to the full report as well. But it kind of helps to have just a quick, I won't call it Gigi, but a quick way to take a look as far as what is addressed. I'm not going to read all of the questions, but you will likely be asked about mission development and strategic plan development, who participated, and they don't expect names, but generally, who was there to participate and to provide feedback on this. Budget and fiscal oversight. They'll ask you how the budget was developed, how the Board stays informed as far as the health of each of the institution. They will ask, they may ask about the Chancellor hiring and evaluation, what the process is, how often it happens, who's involved. And we already talked about the strategic planning. And one of the things that is really great for the Board to weave through in any answer is use of data. What data does the Board use to make decisions? How often do you take a look at this data? What data do you wish you had? Those kinds of things. And I am definitely going to pause here in case there are questions or anything else from the Board comments.
Stephanie, you alluded to obviously the upcoming Mesa visit. Now, the slide says we'll know about two weeks before the official visit whether there is a meeting with the Board anticipated, but I'm making the presumption we already do know.
You already do know.
Okay.
Yes, and it is on, it is April 1st, I believe. Well, I'll make sure that Elza knows and has it. It's on your calendar already.
Yeah, no, it is on ours. I just wanted to make sure that something hadn't changed.
Yeah, it has not. I submitted this a little early, so that's where that comes from. So good catch. Thank you.
Questions from the Board? And again, a number of you, a couple of us were part of the Paradise Valley visits. I have done others before. Dr. Thor, of course, has done many, many and is very familiar. So Board members, are there questions? I think all of us probably have done at least one.
President Bittersmith, I just had a question about the dates of the visit. So my calendar shows both March 31st and April 1st. Stephanie, are you saying it's only April 1st that we need to hold?
I believe that that is the case. However, Mesa has not submitted their final report yet. So after the site visit team reviews the report, they may, they could, they could ask for additional time. So that's why it has not been cleared off of your calendar yet, because we'd rather not need it and have you be ready for it than the opposite. It is highly, highly likely, though, that will only be the one, I think it's a one-hour meeting with the Board, the virtual, though.
Thank you.
Rather be prepared than not.
Other questions? Okay, please proceed.
Thank you. Next up, please, Elza. Some other areas that you may be asked to address includes ethical decision-making, provide examples of that tough decision that we talked about earlier, conflict of interest, or had there been times when you had to recuse yourself from a decision, for example? Make sure that you're free from undue influence. This is especially politically, since we have a majorly elected Board. Or training, they ask about that quite a bit, actually. How often does the Board participate in training? What kind of training do you participate in? Including accreditation happening now, academic freedom, strategic planning, budgeting, and that sort of thing. How often do you participate in shared governance? Do you work with college leaders, including faculty, to make decisions? Do you have examples of that? And then Board responsibilities. Want to make sure that the Board understands what their responsibilities are. And they'll ask you, what do you see as a main challenge at Maricopa in general? Or they may ask you specifically about the college, in this case Mesa. The rest of the information is truly, truly informational. Want to open it up, see if there's anything that's been discussed up to this point. Were there's questions?
Board members, questions? You're doing a great job, Stephanie.
Okay, yay! And if there are ever any questions, Elza or the Chancellor or Provost are really good connections as well. So here's the comprehensive visit. Maricopa is busy, busy, busy. There is one in 2025, and these are those comprehensive visits. That's the one that everything is included. There's people that come out for two days and take a deep dive into everything that is happening at the college. So you notice there's three in 2026 alone, and they are on the far-left-hand side in order of how they occur. And then the others are by year, and we'll, as we get closer, we'll have exact dates for that. Next up.
And we're all going to still be doing this in 2031 and '32, right?
Okay, Elza, next one. This is the assurance review. And so that's that four-year review that generally doesn't have a visit, but our colleges are deeply involved in that. Glendale has one coming up this year in October, so they are really, really close to submitting. Australia is next year, so is Rio Salado. So there is, seven of our colleges have accreditation, major accreditation events happening over the next two years. And the last slide is questions, comments, recommendations, open to any of it.
So again, Board members, questions that you haven't had a chance to ask?
President Bittersmith, it's Donna. I wish I had had this before I went to Paradise Valley, because I had no earthly idea what that was all about. So thank you for this presentation. I really appreciate it.
For the record, Ms. Davis did a great job, even with that.
Of course she did. That's what I hear. And the goal is to actually have this on a regular basis as well, annually, just as a brief overview, so that the Board members continue to be aware of what is happening in accreditation and what is coming up. And those one-sheeters seem to be a big help as well, because it is a really long report that is submitted to the Higher Learning Commission. And we know that Board members have a lot on their plate. So I want to be able to provide as concise of information and really thank the Mesa team for developing that as well.
Right. Further questions or comments? Not Stephanie and team, thank you very much. And I'll just echo Ms. Davis's comments that this is super helpful, even if you've done it. Even if you've done it a couple of times, the reminder is very helpful.
Good to know. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. So with that, that concludes our business for this evening, and thank you, everyone, for your time tonight. Let the record reflect that it is 5:15, and both meetings, the Maricopa Community College Governing Board, are now adjourned.